Hello and thank you so very much for joining me tonight. I go by Luna Neat and what I'm creating for you, for the collective, is the Virgo season 2020 video. So of course, this is not for Virgos only, it's for all of us. It's a collective presentation, it's a collective offering. But happy birthday Virgos! I say it for every friggin sign, but I really do love Virgo energy. I love the nerdiness, I love the cleanliness, I love the precision, the attention to detail. I love the honesty, I love the style, the aesthetic, and I just, the work ethic. Like, I love Virgo energy and the humor, the humor for sure. Some of the Virgo people I know are like of the funniest people that I know. So this season runs from August 22nd to September 22nd. So I'm a little behind with this video, so I do appreciate your patience so very much. We have the full moon in Pisces on September 2nd, and we have the new moon in Virgo on September 17th. So if you wanna work with the full moon energy, by all means, you can do so any way that you feel guided to, right? Personally, I work with full moons for manifesting, as in taking all that energy of that Piscean full moon and directing it towards an area of my life. I choose the area of my life I'm directing it towards with the theme of Pisces, right? Like, that's the season, or rather, like, the flavor, like, that's the energy of the moon. So it would be great for psychic development, for intuition, for dream work in general, like, things that have to do with, honestly, almost anything, truthfully, because Pisces is the 12th sign of the zodiac. And what that means is it kind of has all the cumulative qualities of the present, excuse me, the preceding zodiac sign. So really, you could work with it in any way, simply by working with it for manifesting. Like, I'm using this full moon to manifest, hence tapping into that Pisces energy, and this is what I wanna manifest, and it might be something more physical, especially because the light that will be reflecting off the moon is the light of the sun in Virgo. So it would be a really good time, I think, for manifesting something to do with your physical reality, almost like your playing field, like your environment, if I may say it that way, your day-to-day. The environment, in a sense, like surrounding you, I hope I'm using my words okay here. So Virgo is all about "I analyze", right? So it's a tough season, it's a tough season, not for everyone, not for everyone, but it's a tough season. We were just in Leo, which is usually like pretty, I don't wanna say carefree, that's certainly, you know, we still have cares, of course, we still have many cares. But it's more celebratory, it's more fun in general, you know, and Virgo is like, you know, like, alright, we're done, like, can we get to work now? I have to get to class, I have to do this work, I wanna rearrange my room, I need to clean, I gotta clean up this mess that you guys made for Leo season. Like, yeah, I know you were having fun, but like, could you have done the dishes? Like, now we gotta do, it's like that, right? So it's kind of like a, I'm simplifying it, of course, but it's kind of like a bit of a gear grinding, like, to get in from Leo into Virgo season for many people. If you're thriving, congrats, you know, like, congrats to you. So as this is like this earth-based analytical, Virgo and Gemini both are ruled by Mercury. But Gemini is an air sign, so it's more mental, whereas the Mercury ruling Virgo and it being an earth sign makes it more about the physical realm, so, excuse me, I can't talk. Attention to detail, organization. It's time for a new planner, guys, have you been planning? Have you been recording? Have you been doing your taxes? Have you been keeping an eye on your finances? Have you been, if it's like body stuff for you and you're working to develop your body, are you setting up a little routine for yourself? And I don't mean like outrageous, but like, are you setting up a routine for yourself? What does your day-to-day look like in terms of, you know, how you take care of yourself? What does your day-to-day look like in terms of how you take care of other things? And an attention to detail in terms of setting the stage, setting the foundation, setting the place, you know, for the party, setting up the party scene, or whatever analogy you can kind of attach to here, or like that resonates with you, but making sure that like the boxes are checked, everything is in, everything is clean, everything is polished, everything is like right, hence like foundational, so that like the next steps for, you know, Libra, and then Scorpio, and Sagittarius, as we continue through the year, are, have something to work off of. So there's a lot that comes throughout the year, right? And Virgo season is a great opportunity to make sure that our physical world, be that our body or extended, is in the, we have laid the foundation here, we have systems in place, we have nerdy ass, what up nerds? Like, systems in place for ourselves to build off of going forward. If you're called to plan anything, like, this is a great time for planning. I know this is difficult, COVID, you know, like, I had all these plans to travel and like do little workshops and stuff, like, I can't really plan that right now, 'cause I have no idea when things are gonna, you know, whatever, right? I can't do that stuff, but I can plan other things. I can plan my videos better, I can plan my schedule better. I actually just changed my schedule recently, so now I have this new thing to kind of work with and set up for myself and go from there. Setting up your, again, we're talking about routines, I don't wanna go back, I'm backtracking here, I'm sorry. But essentially, if you have anything that you can plan or develop, like, this is a great time for that. It doesn't mean you necessarily have to have it like, oh, well, I'm gonna plan it and it's gonna happen tomorrow. If you're held up by COVID as well, right, in terms of it, it doesn't mean that you can't plan, or you can't manifest, or you can't use whatever you have access to still, or a loophole of some kind to make sure that all your plans and like organization is, you know, where it needs to be going forward. Virgo energy is on point, it is precise, it is hermetic, it is reserved, you know? It is pulled back, it's not like an in-your-face energy at all, it's understated, it comes in with like the little like, you know, like kinda, not like talking like side, not side-eye, not like talking behind someone's back, but just like, oh shit, like, did you just say something? Like, I haven't heard you say anything all night, and you just dropped this, and you just like called that out, and you just like noticed that thing that like just, now we're all laughing, or now we're like, oh my gosh, like, you're really paying attention here, we thought you were checked out. Like, it's a reserved energy, which is very beneficial, I think. We really need that kind of thing sometimes, particularly after Leo season, which is so in-your-face in a sense, or it's such like a high, like, out there, like, beautiful, like, out-there energy, whereas this reservation gives us time to think critically, to analyze, to refine, and, you know, process essentially, and get everything set up for what comes after this, you know? So this is a lot about like laying down that like, that baseline, and that can be like the challenging part, you know? It's challenging to develop this kind of stuff, it's challenging to set patterns for ourselves and stick to them, you know? I recently did a video and I mentioned how, you know, in Reiki, I'm sure a lot of you guys already know this, but in Reiki, like, we have the 21-day processing, like, after the attunement, and even when we're working with clients and, you know, people are asking like how often they should come back and stuff like that, and you're just trying to advise, that energy is very active in the system for 21 days. 21 days is a great time to like set something like in your head, or rather, I'm saying that wrong, to develop a habit, to develop a practice. So those 21 days can be hard, like, it can be great if you're doing Reiki for yourself, like, that's not the most challenging thing, but when you're like, oh, like, I'm gonna do this, or I'm gonna start this, it can be hard to break through, you know, it can be hard. So you just wanna tap into, you know, the reason behind why you're doing this, or remember, like, this is gonna be so helpful, it's like tending to the soil essentially, or the garden, or like, you know, the plant, so that like you can harvest them down the road, or, you know, that the plants can grow essentially in these like, with what they need, you know, and you don't like botch something up like later, or like the harvest isn't there down the road kind of thing, you know? Not to put too much pressure, but Virgo energy is very pressurized, you know? It's, I analyze, it's, you're gonna, we're probably gonna feel a lot of criticism. It comes from ourself, the criticism is always, you know, about us and like what we project, especially when we're talking about like other people and stuff, you know? Or even things that people we don't know, but like we see in social media. And I'm not talking about right or wrong in terms of like, obviously right or wrong things. I mean like nitpicking things, or like, oh, I wouldn't have done it that way, because Virgo energy knows how to do things best, like, they know how to operate, like, they're the over, they're doing the work, but it's also a bit of like the overseer of like seeing every perspective and like what the experience is gonna be as things come in and out, and like really like orchestrating a lot of, is that the right way to say it? Orchestrating essentially like how things go down, so that hypercritical mind, that extreme attention to detail can drive us bananas, you know what I mean? Like, it can be like one of the worst things to deal with sometimes. It's beneficial, there's a high road and a low road to it, right? Or like a positive and a negative, or however we wanna, you know, define these things. But it can be too much, it can be where we snap at people, or we're rude, or we say things that are kind of hurtful. You know, you gotta, you gotta express this, like, these things do need to come out. If you gotta say something that's not good enough for you, you do need to express that clearly. But also, like, we have to be mindful, or I wanna be mindful, not to fucking crush someone's soul over here, like, make them feel like they are good enough, or like, they can't, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know, like, I think it's very good to be mindful of our words, particularly in like hypercritical phases like this, you know? So take that as you will, okay? This is a little, uh, nothing really to do necessarily with Virgo season, but I wanted to bring this up because for whatever reason intuitively, like, this felt like something, excuse me, this chair is so uncomfortable. But intuitively, this was a topic that I really wanted to bring up for some reason for this video, like, as I was getting set up with my little, you know, bullet points here, essentially of things to chat about. But I really would love to encourage any of you who are newer to astrology or getting into astrology, you know, like, you know, maybe like the basic stuff, to check out your mid-heaven and your opposite. So wherever your mid-heaven is, let's just say it's in Virgo, your opposite of that, god, I forget the name, it's like, I forget what it's called, but the opposite of the mid-heaven has, please, might come in handy for you. It might be something that gives you some perspective. And essentially, why I'm bringing this up, right? So let's say, let's just use Virgo as an example here, Virgo mid-heaven with a Pisces, whatever the opposite is of that, gosh, I'm terrible. But I was watching Astro Finesse, I highly recommend, you know, like, highly recommend Astro Finesse. Great astrology channel, great information, I've recommended it before. But he was the one that, you know, talked about the mid-heaven, where I was like, oh god, like, that makes a lot of sense for me. So essentially, it can be the opposite, so let's call that Pisces here, who knows what that is for you, mine's Scorpio. But it's like how you were brought up, the environment that you were brought up in, as far as I understand. And for me anyways, Scorpio was like a lot of change, a lot of instability, a lot of chaos, kind of like passionate, like fighting kind of like energy, and like, that makes sense. That was the environment that like I grew up in. And what I'm creating in my life and what I'm called to create is Taurian, you know? It's like a bit of stability and like being able to rely on myself to create the environment I want, which, you know, I'm not bougie, but like I do want nice things, you know? Like, I do want well-made clothes, I do want a stocked fridge full of things, and I want my son, most particularly, to be able to enjoy stability in his life. So I just feel like because Virgo has, Virgo energy, Virgo season has this setting of the stage and the environmental kind of perspective here, defining, or excuse me, understanding what your mid-heaven is and if it resonates, what you're called to create and what your world looks like might be an interesting thing to look into, you know, if you're looking for some things to discover. And another thing that you might wanna look into as well is your earth sign. We talked about this before in other videos, but not everyone is aware that we do also have an earth sign. And your earth sign also has to do with like the environment. We could call this, as far as I've read, and I read it in the book, Esoteric Astrology for Beginners, or something like that. It's a very short little page, there's not much to it, but it basically explains the, your earth sign as the opposite to your sun sign. So if I'm a Cancer, my earth sign is Capricorn, and that this is kind of like the game, like, this is kind of the stage, this is the setup of the stage here. And like, I'm living in a bit of a Capricorn playground, or something like that, I don't know. If you wanna check it out though, I would suggest checking out your mid-heaven and the opposite of your mid-heaven as well, and just defining what your mid-heaven is, you can find that out, because it will always be opposite, how convenient that wheel, that wheel is, you know? It might give you some clarity, it might give you some validation, it certainly did to me, like, truly like validated some things I was feeling. I would check out, again, Astro Finesse, he has a series on like all of the mid-heaven placements, so like you'll get a lot of great information out of that. Or, or, and, check out what your earth sign is, so whatever your sun sign is, the opposite, and think about, you know, the experience of your environment. So I'm two earth signs, right? Like, if I'm a mid-heaven Taurian and a earth sign Capricorn, those are very like material, you know, and again, like, I'm not trying to make myself sound super materialistic, but creating that stability and like creating work, doing my work, showing up to my work is very important to me, and it resonates, you know? It resonates, it validates, it makes me feel good, so I'm just sharing those things. Alright, so we're gonna switch over now, and we're gonna move to do some more intuitive guidance on what we can expect this season, of course. I'm sharing all of this, I'm not an astrologer, I don't ever wanna present myself as an astrologer or something I'm not, and I try to credit the people who I do get information from, if there is anything, like Astro Finesse or the books that I read. But I wanted to share with you the cards that we're gonna be using today, 'cause I chose something different, 'cause like I feel like Virgo's aesthetic was like, listen, like, you've been using the same deck for ages now, let's spice it up, let's get spicy. So I'm gonna be using the, oh my gosh, Mystic Mondays Tarot Deck, right? These are Grace Wong, from Grace Wong, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. And I'm also gonna be using this deck that my friend recently sent me, that actually Maxwell from Uncle Moon sent me, and the gifts that he sent me recently. And for these, for these, this is the Flowers of the Night Oracle Card Deck. So I will need to use the booklet for these, because like, I might get some intuitive messages, but they are about these flowers and the paired animal that goes with them, and it just like, it really kind of warrants the book, it's one of those, I hope you know what I mean. And it's new, and I don't wanna, you know, listen, I just wanna, I wanna play by, I wanna be Virgo, you know? Like, I wanna read the book, like, what does the book say, okay? So I'm going to just scooch everything around so you can see, and I'll see you in just a second, alright? Set an intention to get the intuitive messages for this season, because of course, it's different than last year, you know? This Virgo season is different than the one before, and before that. So we wanna find out, like, what are the, what intuitive guidance can we tune into for this season? What's to come, what do we need to keep our eye out, eyes open for? What do we need to bring our awareness to, or maybe focus on? And of course, only if it resonates, right? So sorry for the shadows here, what's going on, it's so shadowy. It's spooky. Okay. Just one more. Okay, we're just gonna cut the deck, and these will look upright to you and upside down to me. So we're just gonna do it a little different. Okay. I don't want these to fall, I'm just gonna stick them here for now. And let me pull these now as well. I'll just have to leave the book out, because I think I'm gonna need it. Aren't these pretty, the back of them, they have like a moon and some flowers? I'm not gonna read these upside down. Don't worry, you'll see them, you will see them. Okay, so let's go with pile one. And here is our story. Okay, so I'm looking at them right side up for me at this point. So we have the Princess of Pentacles reversed, we have the Queen of Pentacles reversed, we have the Two of Pentacles reversed, and we have the Five of Pentacles reversed. Okay, so clearly, there's not a balance here. You have the, we have for, this might resonate with anyone, right? Like, I don't wanna do a pick-a-card, I want, there might be multiple things that resonate with you, of course, right? So I'll show you what the cards look like, we have the Princess of Pentacles, the Queen of Pentacles, the Two of Pentacles, all reversed, and the Five of Pentacles reversed. So it feels like right now, we have these intentions, or desires, or things we're working towards, but there's something kind of off about it, or maybe it's just internal, like, maybe it's not completely in the external at this place. So it doesn't necessarily have to mean that something's wrong, but it's building, or it's a little seed, you know? It's not quite developed all the way, and it seems like it's not gonna develop, like, it's not going to be born. There's some kind of thing that many of us might feel like we're manifesting or looking to manifest, and we're trying to envision what it will look like, or, you know, hold the energy of it, or step into it, but it's still off, or it's not quite there yet, and what seems to be the issue is the fact that there's an imbalance, there's an imbalance here. And of course, in the physical realms of imbalance, like, this is money, this is relationships, this is the system, you know, like, the system of which you are operating under or working to manifest this, and the Five of Pentacles reversed here, it just feels like it's not even time that it can be built, or it's not time to walk through that door, we still feel a reservation, or we still feel it's just not ready. So this is a bit of like a little bit of a bummer here, right? Like, I'm not trying to, we'll find a way around it, of course, but this feels like a validation of an inability, not inability as in it couldn't ever happen, but right now, through this season, a bit of a delay in terms of a physical manifestation of some kind. So let's just check out the oracle card and see if there's any validation here. We have Chance, and there's a, it says Darwin's Orchid, we have a comet in the background. Let me just pull that up and see. I feel so silly reading out of a book here, I really don't ever do this. Okay, so I'm not gonna read you about like the genus of the flower, but "Trust in the cycles and rhythms of life. This could be an ending, but also a beginning, and if you find yourself stagnant, perhaps you need to turn the wheel again, of letting go or unblocking what it is that is holding you back." Chance comes to those who, excuse me, Chance comes to those playing the game, who are open to all possibilities and who trust that they deserve to win. Perhaps there is a need to change your tactics, to withdraw a little and see the bigger picture. From this viewpoint, new possibilities should be clear. A reward for effort is shown in the completion of a project or goal, but be wary of resistance from outside influence, keep going. Things might not be smooth, but they are turning your way eventually. And how nice they have an affirmation. "I embrace the patterns and cycles of life." So this is a perfect card for this one, right? 'Cause it's speaking to like, it's time to do it over, or it's time to turn the wheel again. It's definitely not time to give up, this is not about giving up on this manifestation. And how funny, right? So we have like, of course, these were upside down, but the princess, the queen, like, it's showing that like it's moving, moving, there is progress, there is development, but it's still inside. So the guidance here is of course to create harmony, to make sure that it's sustainable, make sure it is exactly what you want, make sure it's balanced in all, especially all physical areas of your life. I use this example all the time, but sometimes our manifestations contradict one another, or they block, or like, we're not paying attention to reality, you know? If I was like, oh, I'm going on a trip, yeah, I'm gonna manifest trip, it's like, girl, like, we are in COVID right now, like, you're not going anywhere, like, don't get me wrong, I want this to be over as much as anyone, but if I think that I'm gonna manifest this tomorrow, like, it's just, come on, like, I'm probably not gonna do that. So as much as this development is happening, there has to be still an awareness or a looseness, a loosening of like the timeframe, or a refinement of the physical steps, the physical practices to get this to happen. It's not a time for building necessarily in the physical realm, it's more of a time for that internal, how am I changing this, how am I looking at this, how am I thinking about this? How am I taking little steps, day-to-day steps, the steps that create huge changes in our lives, you know? Like, that are sustainable, of course, that aren't shooting us up too high only so that we fall back down again, you know, or, or, you know, that we, I'm sorry, I keep using this word, but so that we can't sustain something. And again, like, going back to what I was trying to say before, sometimes our manifestations are in conflict, right? Like, if I, like I said, I wanna take a trip, but like, it's just not gonna happen right now. But even beyond that, some people want a family, this is the example I use all the time. Some people want like the family, like, oh, I wanna settle down, I want this, I want that love in my life, I want this, but I also want like something else, like, maybe it's like the career or the ability to travel for a year, or to take this kind of like spiritual sabbatical. I'm not saying you couldn't have both, but that doesn't, this doesn't feel like both would happen at the same time. So I'm not giving you a great example here, but basically, my guidance here is to just keep the faith, like, don't give up, keep working on it, it's not that there isn't progress, you just might not see the progress in the reality just yet, and that's okay, because the internal building, the internal setting, the stage is as equally important so that things can be sustained as you go forward and, you know, all of that. So that is our, that is our pile one here. Okay, so then we have, I'm just gonna, okay, cool. So we have the Ace of Pentacles in reverse. Sorry, I'm so sorry, it's so dark in here, I should mess my lights better. Then we have the Ten of Swords, everyone's favorite, so relaxing, right? Then we have the Lovers. Cute, I freaking saw Flamingo the other day, guys. It was flying from the west towards the east, it was just one, and it looked like, it was the weirdest thing. It looked like a freaking balloon, or like a guy flying, or like his legs were like behind, it was bizarre, it was so cool. I was like, ah, like, I wish somebody was here with me. A lot of pink in this too, so I'm feeling, not only do we have the Lovers card, but we have these pinky kind of colors, so I feel like this has a love theme for some of you here. Alright, so this pile is about being given something, being, receiving something, be it love, or an advance, or, how do I say that? I don't mean like an advance in a spooky way of like somebody advancing on you, but like someone paying attention to you, some compliment, some, something going on. Again, I'm picking up, we have the Lovers card, it's not even just that though, I swear. I'm just picking up like a lovey kind of theme here, or a relationship theme in general. So perhaps for some of us, we may have been given something, but like, it's not quite what we want, or we're torn, like, do I want this, like, is this okay? Like, if you just got a relationship and you're like getting into a new one, like, is this right? Am I supposed, is this like okay for me to even do, like, am I just, am I okay? Like, am I, is my brain okay, is my energy okay? Like, is this the right thing, am I? Like, there seems like to be like a basically an awareness, and overthinking, you know, and overthinking here. Overthinking it, not like enjoying it, if that makes sense, or enjoying it, but then overthinking it, or analyzing what you talk about, or analyzing the steps that you're taking, or analyzing how fast is this moving? There's something that you feel is wrong, and I'm not saying there is something wrong, but you're questioning, what is, is this right? Like, could this be, like, how is it possible that in the midst of this COVID situation, like, I'm talking to this person, or how is it in the midst of this, you know? On the other hand though, I do feel that for others of you who aren't really, that that has not shown up, or you're like, no, there's nothing, like, I don't know what you're talking about. This might be an absence, like, this might be where you feel like you're missing something, you have a desire. So we're getting like a couple messages here essentially. Seems like you want something in your life, and like a new beginning in your life, and you're trying to figure out potentially, like, what does that look like? What do I even want, how could, like, am I ready, like, how would I even have time for that? You know, but I have so much to heal still, oh, I still, I'm self-conscious about that. Like, there's like disconnect, so some of you have received it, you've gotten an opportunity already for this new beginning in the physical realm, in some kind of relationship, and some of us are like, no, that's not here, but I think I want it. But regardless, the message still continues into this overthinking, keeping yourself up, like, can't getting things, not being able to get things done. So, and of course, Virgo, hey, like, I analyze, oh yeah, of course, we're gonna be freaking analyzing our relationships and like the things that are being Oh yeah, of course, we're gonna be freaking analyzing our relationships and like the things that are being revealed to us. So I will say, though, that Venus right now, at the time that I'm making this and for the next few months, as far as I know, um, I'm so sorry, I don't have the date for when Venus moves out of Cancer, but Venus is in Cancer right now, and it's not necessarily like, you know, Venus in Libra or Venus in Taurus, where it's like kinda like a home sign, but Cancer is like a very loving sign, right? Like, that's the, that's like almost the bad rap that we get as cancers, you know, like uh too loving, like too much, right? So maybe some of you are thinking about uh what you give in relationships and like, how can I balance that? And I don't wanna do too much, I don't wanna do too little. I don't wanna show like I'm too interested. I don't, I I don't know, like, there might be something tied into that in terms of what you're thinking about. But if those of you who got this and it showed up, there is a divine kind of timing here in terms of that Venus in Cancer, from my opinion, something that might last, something that might be um very nurturing to your soul, so do think about that. And of course, we have the Lover's card here. So this does reflect, you know, and this is upright. This does reflect that, you know, partnership, balance, harmony, like attracts like here. This isn't, this card particularly is not a um opposites attract vibe, you know, there's no Paul Abdul, nothing, none of that, there's nothing like that. This is like attracts like, this is looking into someone's eyes and really seeing yourself. This is a partnership of similar uh Zodiac signs or like something going on. You know, a similar birth chart or a birth chart that has like a lot of um comparabilities, compatibilities in it. Um, someone who has the same upbringing as you. You might be from different backgrounds, but you might have a very similar history, or you might have a similar work ethic, or you might have like something really matching. So if you are overthinking things, you know, go to check on like, what is the similarity? Where is the common ground? Is this here? Do I feel supported and balanced? Is that why? Is that why I'm rejecting it? You know, because like that's so different to me or something? So we'll see, we'll see what our oracle card is too. And then we have the Six of Swords, and I have to say, like, this Six of Swords in this deck is not an incredibly intuitive card for me, like there's not a lot to work with here. But we have these six swords essentially waiting in the waves, right? Like, these are watery element. This is a watery. Uh, oh gosh, I wish I could get just you, you can see, I hope, they're in the water, they're in the emotions. So in reverse, though, so what was all these are saying, right? I'm so sorry. Upright, it's like, watch out for the emotional triggers that can happen, where like, this is mental and emotion mixing together. And sometimes we go through this emotional roller coaster, or we go on this emotional journey, and as we go, it's like, now we have to think about this. Now I have to think about this. Oh my gosh, I felt so good. And now just, but you know, this came up, and now I gotta analyze this about myself. But in reverse, it makes me think that the emotions are what are truly going to heal or soothe, or just like um bring clarity in some way to the um, like it feels a little more chill. It doesn't feel like these things simply just hiding there, like waiting for you to you know, let your emotions like carry you away in such a way that then starts to affect your mental state. But more so perhaps that we can find healing in the emotions, or you know, move from overthinking to tune into like, well, how does, how do I feel? How does this gift, or how does this person, or how does this relationship make me feel? Not how does my thoughts go? How does it make me feel? Do I feel that balance? Do I feel that support? Do I feel that like instant kind of camaraderie and like? Yes, it's very easy to think what like this is too good to be true or whatever, but why? Like, why overthink it? If you're overthinking it because, you know, something didn't last before, like, listen, like, I don't know, people can be together forever. I believe that, but at the same time, like, nothing lasts forever, like there's, there doesn't have to be an end game, you know, like, we don't have to aim for the end game so much that we're overthinking, we're not enjoying the situation. Let's just enjoy the day, like, let's have a good freaking day, like, let's get out of our heads and enjoy one another, you know? So um, let's look at what our oracle card here is. We have Acceptance and Evening Primrose. So pardon me for being the nerdy Virgo first house here, but, okay. Wait, awareness? No, acceptance. Okay. So it says, by making peace now with what you may, oh, so, gosh, I can't read today. By making peace now with what you may find unchangeable, you could find a new way forward. Evening, Evening Primrose indicates that emotional support is needed and offered. That's all same, that's all same. Often, when we feel held in this space, we will naturally improve our outlook considerably. Your commitment to a project, idea, or relationship will be required. This energy also aligns with paternal relationships, which may be tested at present. This flower helps immensely with family relationships and can send a message that things are improving, but that you also need to set firm boundaries to protect yourself. You could be facing rejection soon and are reminded that it is not you who is being rejected, but rather something that you are doing or connected with. This is time to work on what you really want to invest your emotions in, and the affirmation is I am emotionally courageous and strong. So what I'm getting out of that, don't, don't, you know, take what resonates there. But what I'm getting out of that is like, again, moving back to the emotional feeling and the emotional support of the experience and not being too much in your head. Now, it did bring up, the, this did bring up um relationships with parents, so I'm not feeling that, though, like from the cards that we already have, of course, take this, how it resonates with you. And I don't see anything here about rejection. The rejection I see is us rejecting things because we're overthinking it, because we're so much in our head, and that we should enjoy the experience and the emotional, like the fun, like the play, right? And like all of that, so that's what I feel. What's he doing? How was he doing this? Ooh. Okay, so we have the Nine of Wands in reverse. We have the Three of Wands. How funny, how they've been like kinda paired. The Hierophant, which I, I love this picture of the Hierophant word. And then the Six of Pentacles reversed. Okay, let me just look at these. So some of us are breaking through some kind of challenge here. Some of us with this card is about um in reverse especially is what I mean, knowing that like there have been things that, obstacles, challenges, and not like challenges, like, oh, I don't have enough money to get that done, or or I don't have the time, but more so um challenges as in people or even ourselves are setting up too many things. Like we had been inhibiting our own growth and our own exploration, in a sense, because we've been taking on too many things. So people may be asking you to do stuff, people may be asking you to um do this, or join that, or come to this, or promote that, or just like getting you involved in too much stuff. Or you've been doing this, you know, you've been maybe feeling so isolated and like, kinda like erring on the opposite side now, and like really pushing forward to like fill your day with things, or tasks, or projects, or something. It doesn't matter where it came from necessarily, I guess, like in the message here, but it seems like there had been too many things going on. And in this reverse perspective, I feel like it's, it's something we've become aware of, like, you know, I can't do all of that. I can't say yes to all these people. Like I was just talking to, I've had to turn down like friends, you know, like friends that wanna do stuff with me. I'm like, I would love to say yes to you. I love you. I wanna do things with you, but like, at this point, I can't commit to any more things because it's difficult for me as is, let alone if I start doing more stuff, right? So there's, oh, excuse me, excuse me there, guys. But there seems like there's some kind of realization here of like, wait a minute, like I'm boxing myself in, I'm overextending myself. Um, I'm making my own challenges by saying yes or not having healthy boundaries to be able to like block, to shut some stuff down, or say like, I would love to, but like I just can't right now, you know, bow out. So it seems like we've kinda, some of us have woken up and we've had this realization. I'm overextending myself. This is creating a cage for me. This is not helpful in any sense for me. Alright. And then we have the Three of Wands, which is about deliberate, like you can see, it's like taking steps, deliberate minim- a minimalization of all these wands. It's funny, like nine is a three number, you know, three, three, anyway, okay. But deliberate, how can I, if I'm doing too much stuff, whether it's your own project, or projects with people, or combination of these things, what can I do first? What can I put my energy into first that creates a foundation? That creates the first stepping stone, so to speak, the first uh portion of the waterfall. And that energy will either lift me up to my next task more effectively, or that energy will pour into my next task more effectively. However, this is about ascending here. I like to kinda think of it as like waterfalls and water pouring. I don't know, but this works the same way. It's about methodically taking approach to the things we've overcommitted to or that we're doing, so that we can take that step and get to where we're going and be free and enjoy the journey and not be boxed in and feel supportive, feel like we're growing, feel like we're, you know, I almost wanna say like on top of the world in a sense, like there's nothing, there's nothing to me, and I know I'm different than everybody, or you know, like we're all different, is what I mean by that. I'm not special snowflake, I just mean we're all different. Nothing feels better to me, well, you know, besides my family, than like me feeling like I got my work done, and like, oh my gosh, like I did it, and I put it out, and I did, like, I love that feeling. And I feel like I'm on top of the world for a little moment, like I let myself have that in, that joy of like, I did it, I did what I set out to do. I finished my checklist. I did what I wanted to do. And I'm not saying it's like massive things where, you know, we can, we can go too far with that, right? So be careful. But anyway, this is about methodically taking steps. This is about moving to manifesting. This is, three is a manifestive number, you know, one plus two equals three kind of thing. So, or, or like mother, father, child, however you wanna look at it. So this is about letting you know, like you are gonna manifest what you want. You just can't let things block you in, although you already know that. And you need to think about this. Hello, Virgo season. From this methodical approach to see, to see, you know, I'm telling you like not to have an end game in one thing, but that's what I'm, I'm talking about that with like relationships, because people are a liability. We can't, we can, we love people, I love people, you know, but like I don't count on people, because people ah, you know, they have their own lives, like it's not right for me to count on them too much, you know, like, don't get me wrong, I have beautiful people that I appreciate so much in my life that I do count on, and I feel like there are people that can count on me a hundred percent. But what I'm just trying to share is like, it's not about not, the, the end game for like a relationship is not the best thing. Sometimes it like takes away from the moment. But this in terms of your manifestation, we do wanna think about the end game. We do wanna think even beyond the end game, you know, like, okay, well, now that I had that experience, or now that I completed that, or now that I have this fulfillment, now I get to be this person. I've just made that video recently on like the key to manifesting. If you haven't seen that, maybe that would help you. But it's about manifesting in a methodical sense. I'm over, I'm overdoing it here. Then we have the Hierophant, which is reminding us to tie in the spiritual aspect, tie in the um the wisdom, you know, like kinda like I was saying with like the manifestation and the end game, like what, what about that manifestation is fulfilling to your soul? What about that feels like you're doing it for a greater picture, or for spirit, or for God, or for the universe, or for humanity? And make sure that that's just tied in essentially here. And Hierophant is about tradition, it's about systems. It doesn't necessarily have to be like old school. I mean, look at this, this one is not a traditional looking Hierophant, Hierophant in any sense of the world. I love this card. But um, and I like that it has that playful or or modern kind of approach on the Hierophant, right? It doesn't have to be old school, outdated, antiquated, but a system of some kind, or taking from an old tradition, adapting it potentially for the modern times or for your life today, even if five, ten years ago, twenty years ago, you did it a different way. It's kinda just like tying that in here. Okay, and then we have the Six of Pentacles in reverse, and I feel like this is a reminder, cause it has like a yogic, almost like a little pose, right? Like a little meditative yogic pose. This is just a reminder here to make sure that you're maintaining balance in your body and harmony in your body, that might be through yoga, that might be through boxing, that might be through meditation, that might be through the foods you eat. It doesn't, you know, you, you know yourself best, of course, and we're all, we all have our own stories and interests and all that stuff. But this is like telling you, like, don't lose sight of your body. Sometimes we can get so like into our work, I don't know about you, I know I can, where like I forget to eat, or you know, I realize, or rather, like I, like the day goes by, I'm like, oh my god, like I haven't like eaten enough yet, like I gotta like stop and like make sure I feed myself. But I'm like not hungry now, cause I went too far, like, ah, that stuff happens to me. But that can be the same for like exercise, you know, like I know not everybody's super into exercise, believe me, I love to exercise, but I try to do it every other day, because I know that I feel a lot better. Like I truly feel a lot better, my asthma, or the asthma that I experience isn't as intense. My body doesn't hurt when I like go too far then, you know, like so it's just a reminder here, like pay attention to your body, your body's needs, and don't lose sight of that in your manifestations. Or perhaps as you're manifesting, this is a reminder to make sure that you add the intentions of like perfect comfort, no harm to anyone, because like I said before, you can manifest money, but it might come to you because you got in a car accident, and now your freaking neck is all messed up or something, you know? I think I've said this before too, but like, I was hit by a car, I was walking and I got hit by a car, and I got a little settlement. Like, it wasn't, it's gone now, like this was like a really long time ago, but um I feel like I manifested it in a bad way, you know, like I didn't want that to happen. My, tore my rotator cuff, it was a terrible experience. I had PTSD and like all this stuff, so let's see what our oracle card is for this one. Oh, we have, ooh, Fishbone Cactus, never even heard of that. Looks kinda familiar, though, and Communication. Fishbone Cactus, eh? What you got for us, Fishbone? Oh, wait, the Communication, I'm looking for Fishbone. Hello. You okay today? Communication. Okay, time for discussions, speaking up, and ensuring that you are really heard. What needs to be said or communicated more, oh, excuse me, what needs to be said or communicated more clearly? Is your truth, your message, your meaning being fully understood? Take extra notice of what is being shown and shared with you, as you could easily miss some very important points. This is a chance to share your passion through creative expression and to gain more interest in what it is you do. This energy extends to opportunities to change jobs, gain promotions, sell creative works, and obtain positions to share your work more widely. Hmm, I love that, and it makes sense with that stepping stone kinda thing with the Three of Wands. Truth is being heard at the moment, and you may need to forget the past and trust the future so you can enjoy today more fully. Be careful of gossip, being misrepresented, or doing things which may not align to your truth. And the affirmation is, I speak with truth and clarity. So let's see, how will that show up? So this can be in your manifestations, like are you communicating your manifestations clearly? First of all, it could be, are you holding your boundaries, or you're saying like, look, I can't, I, I would love to, but I can't. I would love to, but I can't. And then moving forward, clearly identifying your communication to the universe of like what it is you're manifesting and tying in the, the fulfilling aspect of it, the, the, the aspect that comes, that like ties to your growth, who it lets you be, um, spirit tied in, like how it fulfills you on a spiritual level as well, the process and everything, you know? So watch your words, journal, write some poetry, um, haikus or something that feels good to you to clearly express what you want to manifest here. So here we have the Four of Wands, which is about like creating stability, starting something maybe, or, or just maintaining something that creates stability, or some of the work you're already doing, stable. One of the income streams you have feels pretty stable, or maybe you're thinking of how you can create more stability, stability in your life now, like what, 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 what would that look like? How can you do that? That might just be on your mind. We have the Two of Wands here in reverse, so some of us might feel insecure or torn, or torn about what does that look like? Like what would be the, the missing piece here to um create that stability? It seems like we have this opportunity to do two things, and we're maybe a little torn on like, what does that look like, or how can I do that best? two things and we're maybe a little torn on like, what does that look like, or how can I do that best? It's funny, I'm just looking at the images and more of like a Rorschach-y kinda thing right now. And it feels like this kinda like birthday candle or birthday cake, maybe some of you feel pressure. It's around your birthday, or it's around some kinda anniversary of some kind, um and it's just like bringing it back to you, or you feel like you should have been at a certain point, or just something like that going on. Then we have the Knight of Wands reversed. Which may, might be like misleading, there might be someone in your life that's misleading you. There might be someone who's like trying to rush you, um, or, you know, make you feel like uh, you gotta do it quicker than you need, than you feel like you want to, and if that happens if you listen to that, like, going too fast, like you, you have a decision to make essentially. What you want is stability, right, what you want is this, I love this image, I love it, um. And there's, you're being, you feel torn on like what that is, like what do I create next, or I have to go one way or the other here, like, I, I don't believe that, like, you know, truthfully, I, when people try to make me choose between things, between things, it's like why can't, why can't I have both, like why, why can't I have both, like who says, but you know, if the options are go east or west, you really can't do both at the same time, right, you know, so like there are things that you need to make a decision on. And it seems like there's some kind of interference or some kind of, um person, or even just energy of like rushing or like pushing too fast, or, um kinda like just rushing, like making you feel pressured in some way, this might be, you know, someone you know, this might be just the energy in general, or you feel stressed, or you feel pressured, or you want it done now, and like you feel very impatient. But still torn, so it's like, uh, I want this down, but like I don't even know what's right. You really need to take your time and figure this out for yourself and not let things, um not, not, not pressure you to rush into things, you know, ah just, it's not gonna benefit, because then we have the Ten of Pentacles in reverse, if you rush into things ah, or let other people guide you into things without you truly thinking about it yourself. You're not gonna have that fulfillment of the material realm and that stability and that like everything that you're looking for. I mean, you could have it, but you know, you might have to start over, it's gonna delay, it's gonna like, it's not gonna support this, essentially, it's not gonna support the upright Ten of Pentacles, that's like, you have everything you need and you're fulfilled and like you know, you're time to start again, but like you got it all, like all stacked up over there, you know, whether it's your money or like your health or whatever, but like physical things. And I'm just tying these together cuz of that like stability and stuff, but here, it just seems like this. You have to make a decision, but you, I, I wouldn't let um, rushing influence you, I wouldn't let a person putting pressure on you influence you, you have to make the best decision for yourself. So let's see what our card here is, motivation. Just says four o'clock, I guess that's a flower that I've never heard of before, so let's go to the Ms, motivation. Okay, I'm gonna start over, so, alright, I had to start over cuz like I was struggling there for a sec. It is time to action your plans and turn them into a reality. If seeking the answer to a question, it really is a big positive yes. Focus is very important and breaking a huge undertaking into smaller tasks and making the commitment to stick to them will assist you. Planning, willpower and constant application of action are important. Do not put off any decisions or plans at the moment as it may adversely affect the outcome. Interesting, extra activity is indicated and will be very welcome and positive. This could include travel, moving or socializing. Make sure you do not miss out due to lack of confidence or through apathy. You could find distractions increase and so too procrastination, which could put up blocks that are hard to navigate. Interesting, I am a driving force who will make things happen. Alright, so maybe I'm wrong here, like maybe, maybe this is someone pressuring you to rush into things? Maybe this is not having the energy yourself to do it though, like this, this seems more like that, so maybe I was wrong, so you could look at it that way, if the first way I said it resonated with you, cool. But perhaps like you feel like you need to make this decision and you feel lulled, or you feel like you don't, you're not in your Knight of Wands energy. And you can't get it done, and that's preventing you from that like fulfillment and that completion. So I guess it could go either way here, I'd still watch out for people pressuring you, I don't think that's ever a good thing, but just to be authentic, this card speaks about the whole thing and like shines a different light on it, which is why oracle cards are so nice to work with, right? So it's not necessarily only outside influence and someone putting pressure on you, it's us kinda like procrastinating on making that decision. So if that applies, you do need to make a decision, right? And you have to make sure that it's something that leads to your fulfillment, you know, and know that it is for your fulfillment. And for your stability, and it's all for you, so that's sometimes the hardest stuff to do, isn't it, right? The stuff that's for us, alright, so let me just show you the crystals that we're gonna be working with in our session. Okay, so first we have this purple cubic fluorite. Very cool, good for organization. Clear thoughts, then we have this, ah, oh gosh, I forget the name of this Jasper. Um, polychrome Jasper, I believe, beautiful like painting kind of scene and you know, I picture like the aesthetic, you know, like the Virgo aesthetic, picking the colors, picking the color scheme. Overseeing things, just, I don't know, that just really came up, and it's very nurturing in general and supportive that way. I have this mix of stones, which is garnet, um, chrome diopthes. Ah, some other stuff, it's like a mix of stuff, but I really love this one because it has I can't show you right now, but on the crystal faces, like some of these points have these record keepers, so that's mul, that's one of the main reasons I brought this out. I feel like working with stones that have unique markings or faces or, um, some have windows, like you can look that up, crystals with windows, crystals with keys, crystals with triggers. Um, all of those things, or crystals with record keepers would be like a really beneficial stone to work with for this season. I love this one, it's like a little floating island. I do bring out a couple clear quartz points that we wanna, I wanna work with for our session, and these are gorgeous, they're like kind of water clear, very clean looking, clear quartz points. And then finally, I have this, um, yummy ice cream sandwich looking piece of crystal praise, it's one of my favorites. And I brought out the crystal praise specifically to like take the edge off. To give us a moment before we act or do or say, just to be sure that we're doing so from the best place for ourselves and for other people as well, in a sense, like don't get me wrong. What's best for you might not be best for someone else, and you gotta do what's best for you, but you know, um holding our boundaries, especially with people we love and like it's not just some stranger, or it's not just someone who's like trying to manipulate us or something, it's like someone we actually care about, we care about the relationship. We wanna make sure that we just like take a moment, you know, like think like, am I being hypercritical of this person right now? Is this warranted, they ask for my advice, like, can I cool it a little bit, so I thought that crystal praise would be a nice one for that. Alright, well, I hope that this served you, I hope you enjoyed, and we will scooch over and get to the ASMR portion of the video. Alright, so see you shortly, alright, so welcome back, welcome back, thank you for continuing to join me over here, we're going to light our candle, get into our session, alright? Got this. Cute little holder. Can I light our candle? Instead of intention. So on behalf of your and my and everyone else's highest and greatest good, in perfect comfort, in perfect alignment, in perfect perfection. It is our intention today to support relaxation, to support balancing. To support a temperance between that hyper focus, that hyper vigilant awareness of everything that is so crucial and supportive, and we don't wanna go against the grain, right, we don't wanna fight the strengths of the season, but I also would invite this session to support calming the mind. Getting out of the mind and into the body when needed, you know, when need be. To just be a little more chill, you know, have, have our chill times throughout the season. To bring the attention to the body, to the emotions, to to the physical moment, like when we talk about being in the moment, being present, bringing awareness, all of those things. So that we can kinda cool it on that hyper analytical, hyper focus and just again support the balance between these two states, it's not about canceling it out. But it is about making sure that we can catch our breath, or we can use that, um, analytical perspective that we've been working on to, a- and then let things process, you know, and then let things compartmentalize. And take care of ourselves, Virgo energy is very much about serving, you might find yourself called to take on things for other people, that can be perfect and beneficial and fulfilling on both ends. Or it could be, no, I'll do it myself, so much so that like you're literally, okay, yeah, well, you're gonna do it yourself then and you're gonna resent it, you're gonna be cranky about it, might not be a great thing, right, so the main thing for our session here, if we had to really articulate one theme, is just that temperance between mind and body and forward thinking and past analytics and information collecting with the present moment, tuning into our emotions, tuning into our needs. Not losing sight or getting lost in some like, um, briar of, of like tangled, um uh, thicket or something of thought and, um, hyper analytical, so much so that we're spinning our wheels, or we're not delegating when we need to, or when we would best be, so again, right, just temperance. Balance between mind, body and spirit. Alright, and if you have something you'd like to work on, or you'd seeking in this, be this a mental thing, or a body thing, or a manifestation thing, or particularly to support your plan laying, your, um, structures, your method, your methodical approach to how you set things up for yourself, how you lay the foundation in your life for the year to come, for the months ahead to come, alright, so just have a little look, or have a look rather, at this little flame, and follow it as we make this. You know, you have to do your best to follow it, but make this little um, back and forth, what do you call it? Infinity shape, balancing the left and right portions of the brain. Balancing intuition and logic. And we're gonna go the other way. Just breathe and relax. Can I use a little secret smoke? A little pine, this is pine. You may have noticed, I don't use Palo Santo anymore, nor do I use White Sage. There are so many other options. We're just gonna move this through the auric field, I do it a couple times cuz I don't want it to get too crazy. So this is kinda my method, so bear with me. It smells so good, like my glasses are like more like brown sugar to me. So here's that fluorite. It's purple, you'll have to just trust me. It's like a nice raw piece. Fluorite is wonderful, such a wonderful stone to work with. Again, organization, clear thought, planning, structure, where do things go? But also very protective of the auric field, it's a protective stone in general. So, as everyone else is kind of in their criticizing stage too, this would be a really good one to work with, so you're not picking up those projections from other people who think that they know. But you know what I mean, like, who think they know what's best for you, or and all that, cuz no one really knows what's best for you, but you. Wait, fluorite. Then the polychrome Jasper. It's gorgeous, it's like got brown and like a terracotta color, and even a kinda sage to green. It's so pretty, nurturing, getting, remembering to tune into emotions, Virgo energy is not super emotional. The energy is not super emotional because it's so analytical and like, we have to get this done, like I don't have time for that, but mm-hmm, you know, we need to tune into the emotions, so like the opposite of Virgo is Pisces, which is incredibly emotional and sensitive. And those signs are best when they meet in the middle, you know, we're always, um our best selves is always like the complementary energies, so working with the emotions, remembering to tune back in. Do not neglect your emotional care, your mental health as well, your body, you know, your body needs. I like this one just for like, again, the aesthetic, it's truly beautiful. So then I have this, um, it's like a mixture of green garnet, chrome diopthes or diopside, diopside, um something else, I can't remember, oh, epitote. I'll try to show you now what I was speaking about. I'll try to show you now what I was speaking about with the um the little record keepers, so here's one by my nail. Let me get the candle. Um, nice. Why do I make things difficult, right? Let me see, let me aim my pointer finger at one. There's like a s- right here. Oh, Lord. Well, you have to just trust me, I guess. There's like these beautiful markings of like triangular patterns in the stone there, right here, this like little piece. But like I said, anything with record keepers, keys, um, windows, anything that has any crystals, any crystals that have um particular shapes or markings. Because hey, if we're going analytical, we need to look at the records, right? Here's that crystal praise. It actually is like a beautiful turquoise-y kind of color. For calming, being a little patient, being a little like, wait, let me think before I act. Not that Virgo rushes into things, they don't, but like, let me phrase this the right way, or let me um just taking that moment, you know, especially if you have a lot of fire in your chart or something like that and you kinda like let that criticism like fly out. Not saying hold it in, but like just be mindful. And crystal praise can be so lovely and of course, this is quite an interesting piece, but there's little polished pieces or tumble pieces you could work with if you wanted to. I love it. So, um, clear chords for focus, direction. Building, like a little tower here, it's ascending. How gorgeous, I have two of them. But you can feel sometimes like the ridges, I don't know if you can see, but this has like little ridges on it. Even running your finger on here where you're meditating can be a way of working with the hidden components or the, the records of the crystal and stuff, they say. So, I'm gonna use this desert rain. My intention with this is just support like fresh perspective and picturing the desert, like so this like open space, this place of like taking everything in, kind of level. I've never been to the desert, so I could be wrong, but the way I see it in my mind, just like level, flat, like this um foundation, right, this like foundational space. So, I'm gonna spread your back. And front, let's go this way now. We're just gonna start by working this through the aura. Just to like gain the look, like take stock of everything, like bring that clarity. Notice how far away things are, it's almost like this measurement kind of connection. Listen to the sounds, do any animals? Do any animals, coyote, lizard, snake? Does anything pop into your head? So, just kind of like te- teasing the aura a little here. Just bringing some like awareness, my intention is to like bring some awareness of the core self out into the outer perimeter. So, those core values are in, more so in your experience, more so present, easier to express, even non-verbally, you know, just from how you carry yourself or just your, the air about you. Some of you might find yourself being quite a perfectionist, you know, quite hung up on the details. And you know, like, don't fight it, don't lose sleep over it, but don't fight it, that's what it's about. Sometimes it's hard, it's hard to criticize the self and be like, oh, I've been doing this wrong, this doesn't serve me anymore or this relationship isn't working and all I wanna do is nitpick it, isn't this telling me something here? You know? Don't get me wrong, no one's perfect, I'm not saying we're looking for perfection, but does it fit, does it match? Does the career, do the projects? Does your room, is your Feng Shui on point? What about your playlists? Music is such a beautiful aspect of Virgo energy, in my opinion. Like curating, cure-curating, you know, like so Virgo. Curating your playlist, sharing your playlist, you know? Setting the tone. Alright, and we're gonna do some um extractions of, of self-doubt, of obstacles, of challenges, of anything that's not serving you and helping you to kind of tune to that perfection vision, like being able to see things because sometimes our wants or um, how do I say this best? We can, we can trip ourselves up essentially, you know, like we can create a facade or we can create a false aspect and there were some stuff in the cards that kind of brought that up, you know, like making sure that things are cohesive, that they're, that things make sense, that they're supporting. So, I wanna do extractions for anything that's blocking your ability to truly see and truly take steps, it's not just seeing and knowing, it's also the physical aspect, the grounded nature of taking steps, so you're able to, again, create that foundation, alright? So, let me just quickly though, before we move to that, make a little noise for you. Journal. Plans. Personally, I resonate with Virgo energy a lot, I thought it was a Virgo rising for a while, right? I keep a little one in my pocketbook or whatever for writing down video ideas or lists of things I wanna do. So, these are like work things for me. Meetings I might have, deadlines for things. And this is kind of the same, but um like a bigger one. One I can keep in my office or write like ideas in and stuff. Look how cute. Can you see that? Can you see it? Yeah. Fancy. So, get yourself a journal, get yourself a pen, get yourself a planner, make your own, whatever. But, something really important about that planner, you know, it's very helpful. So, for our extractions, I'm gonna first use this. It's a bra- breathe oil, so it's very like eucalyptus-y, pepperminty. And it's very strong, so I don't wanna get this in my eyes. But we want to focus on like that clarity, you know, how eucalyptus or peppermint when you like breathe it in, it like can clear the head fog, can just kind of, it's just very supportive for, I'll call it clarity, but like, I'm sorry, that's the best word I can think of right now, but like, you know, like cleaning up the head. And the lungs, I guess, too, but I wanna focus on the head specifically. Almost like um some energetic, like sinus stuff that we wanna do some cleansing in terms of this um extraction process here, you know, so it's not gonna be through the body. This is like a mental extraction or plucking. But first, we'll do some channeling through the heads piece, I'm seeing like an eagle. Just sending some supportive intention, some energy snacks, some openness to move and begin to get things flowing. To move the energy of the energetic sinuses to clear, so we can fully experience, we can fully see, so our equilibrium, our sense of the environment is most um like accurate, right? Seeing Buddha. Like a statue. Maybe you wanna visualize this sinus space cleansing, purifying, moving, flowing, maybe little bubbles moving around, just like clearing the gunk, you know, or loosening the stagnant, stuck kind of attachments or facade or anything that began preventing from the awareness of the reality, right? And I know we create our own realities, but over the head, down the face, through the cheeks. Through the, like, this part, like this kind of lymphy part, so. Up to the ears. Around the brow. Here. Deeper, under the eyes. I'm feeling like pressure on my left side and I'm focused on your left side, so I just wanna see a little, send a little more in. I'm seeing like sea turtles, harbors, seals, sea lions, manatees, like that kind of stuff. Now the other side. So, create another eye. I'm gonna use this cute little crystal here. Cause it's perfect, right? So, I'm gonna focus in to all the, like the labyrinth, right, like this labyrinth in our heads and like clear the blockages, like clear the things that prevent us from navigating this most effectively and seeing and observing and tweaking as well things most effectively, right? So, I'm just gonna focus in, pardon me. I'm gonna go here first. Cause there is the thing, of course, right, of going too far into curriculums. You might be unhappy, let's say, with a relationship, but is it really that person's fault or is it both of you? And should it be a shared responsibility if it's a relationship you wanna maintain? You know what I mean? The brow. Around the eye socket. Virgo, right, like, excuse me, over the nose. What we're doing here, I'm sorry for repeating myself, but we're just preparing the space for that Virgo mind. So, it's not influenced by insecurity or self-defeat. So it's not influenced by insecurity or self depre- self, self-deprecation. Just seeing things for how they truly are, what they truly need, how to serve ourselves, how to serve others. Down in the jaw, kind of like pockety area. Make sure you drink enough water this season too. Okay, what's next? Alright, so we're gonna do a little more channeling and we wanna focus on bridging the mind, the heart and the emotions. You know, it's like the, the body will follow, that's there. We've talked in the cu- with the cards already, it's not a time to be, my gosh, this hurts me to say, forgive me, but it's not a time to be lazy. That doesn't mean we need to spin our wheels, it doesn't mean that if you're not productive in the typical sense or whatever, what you picture every day that you're failing, I don't mean that at all. But the work can be done through rest, the work can be done through journaling, the work can be done through planning, right? So this isn't a time to be lazy as in not look at this stuff. It's okay if it's not like, go, 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 go. But it's not a time to put your head in the sand, it's not a time to avoid the work, okay? That's what I'm trying to say there. So I wanna tie in the mental field, the heart to your fulfillment, your guidance, your heart messages, what your soul is asking you for, how you want to serve, you know? And the emotional space of the fulfillment, of the connection, of the emotional context or, or um, the emotional facet of all of this stuff, so that like, you're enjoying it. Hello, you're enjoying planning, you're, you're experiencing it in a way that is not only logically fulfilling, but emotionally fulfilling as well, okay? So we're gonna focus first on the heart space. Seeing an anchor. Just channeling through. Setting intentions to support our direct connection to all that is, to our souls, guidance, communication, requests, desires, the pulling feeling, the feeling that tells us like, I want that, I want that. I wanna set the stage, I want the foundation and it's not, the foundation is not always the fun part, right? It's not the fun part, the fun part's as we go, but it has to be done. So your soul will guide you to set the foundation, cause without it, there's a big, big key missing, right? Working with this heart. Hearing the messages, feeling the pull, hearing Bamba tapping. The pull through your heart, to move you, to tell you, to let you know, hey, I wanna have a dinner party. That means I have to prepare for this. I wanna take a trip. That means I have to prepare for this. I wanna change my career, I wanna change my college um, studies, I want to, whatever you want. There, there's a system that supports it and this is the key to success, honestly. Is systems that support the things you want over a longevity, you know, over a nice, easy notch, just nice solid growth through these systems. Alright, checking in with the mental field and channeling here. To think and see and identify and know and express in ways that support what your heart is asking for, what your goals are. The emotional center. Waking this up, not the numbness, you know? Allowing ourselves to enjoy, to make it fun, to let us know what fulfills us, or rather to let us know through our feelings of, of comfort or gratitude, or I mean, we could always be grateful even when our things aren't the best, right? But what it means more so is the, the good feelings, or the neutral or good feelings let us know that we're moving in the right direction, right? The compass. I'm seeing like little fire, um, it's like a skateboard company thing that I remember my friends having, this little flamey guy. I'm gonna just blend these together, bridge these together. Sorry. Alright. I'm gonna fluff up the auric field. First. And just wanted to take us out, take us out a little. Kalimba, I don't think this thing is tuned perfectly, but like I was saying, music is also about the stage, the ambiance, the lighting. I guarantee we get more people asking me how I do with my lights this month, this season. Cause that's what you want, you want things to be comfortable, you want things to look right, you want the vibe. The vibe, like Virgo is about the vibe, the playlist, the music, the food, the smells, the aromas in the air, like all of these sensory experiences, right? So what I can offer is a little kalimba, right? But I'm just gonna play um, like sounds, I'm not gonna make a song or anything, cause I haven't been practicing, so. Sorry, I haven't been practicing that, but I hope it was okay and a nice little send off, you know? Thank you so much for allowing me to share a little piece of your path tonight or today. I hope that you enjoyed, I know the reading is kind of a bit long, hope it was okay. Um, just so appreciative, thank you Patreons, thank you especially for your patience with me. Um, I love you so much and I'm so very grateful. Thank you to all of you as well in the YouTube community. And you know, I appreciate you so much, of course. Thank you so much to those of you I've been so blessed to work with. I absolutely love our Saturdays and Sundays together, so thank you, thank you. And yeah, just my deepest, deepest, deepest gratitude and thanks. So from the very bottom of my heart, I bow to the divine within you, within me, to this magic, this connection, this ooh, spacey stuff that we're all a part of and we all connect through and how, how truly beautiful. Alright, much love to you and namaste.